To know that we're on the right track, so it sounds like you know.
Probably one of the outliers or unexpected things that came from this and Bethany, the special education teachers here, I don't know, I'm putting her on the spot, but the level of differentiation that we could do for her students has blown us away. All teachers know that differentiation is the way we should go to get kids what they need, but the reality is there's 24 hours in a day and that to get what they need, it's hard to do. And Bethany, do you want to share anything more than that?
Sure. You don't have to come up there.
No.
So, one of the things that I'm able to do for my kids with the use of ShowMe and working like that, we can actually, I can record my voice and read the questions for math to my students. So, it's not like a monotone voice, even though sometimes I do sound monotone. I try to change it up, but they can push play and listen to that question as many times as they would like. So, it's very differentiated and very useful because I can use that for any classroom that is using the ShowMe app. And that's something that, you know, I'm not able to do. I'm one special education teacher out there at that school, so I can't be in every single classroom K through six at all times to read a question to my students who have read aloud accommodations on their IEPs. So, it's very beneficial to them and me as well.
Thank you for coming. Are there any other questions?
Thank you guys for being here. Thank you for leaving us in place. Great job.
Thank you.
Any correspondence? Entertained most of the approved consent agenda.
Mr. President, I heard that we approved the consent agenda.
Second. Motion by Mark, accepted by Jane. Approved the consent agenda as printed. Further discussion? No discussion. All in favor, raise your hand. Thank you. For discussion items, curriculum report, Garden City High School digital practices assessment. Roby?
Yes, and I'll be joined by Mr. Tone here after sections of this. First, I want to, I want to just start by thanking Dr. Hopkins for your service on the board.
Oh, thank you.
I'm not sure how many board media, I've presented in a number in a row, but it's maybe the last time I get to present for you on the board. And so, I appreciate your support of Garden City High School and all the students in Garden City, so I just want to take time to thank you for your support. What Mr. Tone and I are going to present on, the results of a digital practices assessment that we underwent at Garden City High School last year. And at the high school, we're always looking for ways to, well, improve our practices, to get better at what we're doing. Not to just stay put and say we're doing it as well as we can, but to learn and to do things in different ways. And sometimes it's hard to do from the inside. If you're just on the inside taking a look, you don't get that global view. And it's nice to have some input. And last year, about a year ago, right now, Dr. Carlin called with the option, the opportunity to undergo an assessment of how we use technology and digital communication in a number of ways in our building. And so, we jumped at the opportunity to get better and to do this. Our assessment was conducted by a consultant from the International Center for Leadership and Education, the Model Schools folks, Daggett and his old crew. Our consultant's name was Tom Whitford. And the assessment happened in three phases. First, we were given a local self-evaluation of how we think we're doing in our practices. And we completed that as an administrative team with some help from KZYS with technology. And then there was an onsite visit for two days, visiting with staff, administration, visiting some of our classes. Mr. Whitford visited about a dozen classes over two days. We had 1,200 classes happening over those two days. So, about 1%, you got a chance to see, just kind of, and a variety of teachers, some experienced, some not so experienced, some we know were really reliable, you know, great users of technology and some others that were kind of feeling their way. And so, we wanted him to just kind of see us and some were core classes and some were electives. We just wanted him to take a look at us. And then there was some reflection. And he gave us a feedback report a couple of months later, kind of encapsulating his thoughts on where we are as far as digital practices. He evaluated us on these seven pillars, the seven pillars of leadership, digital leadership as developed by Eric Scheniger, who is one of the consultants who works with the International Center. He's also been out to Garden City, worked with ours, talked to our staff, worked with our administrators. You can see on these seven pillars, it encompasses more than just what's happening in the classroom. It's really how you use digital technology throughout your system. So, it was really an encompassing look at our practices and a lot of good self-reflection for us. The actual assessment was in a form like this, where you rated yourself or Mr. Whitford rated us on where we were at. So, we were either not yet starting, all the way to well-developed. And along the way, the rubric, each step up got more specific as far as the things they were looking for to move to another level of achievement. So, what I'm going to do now is just kind of encompass his feedback to us and what we've been doing as a result for each of these seven areas. The student engagement and learning had three areas of assessment. Student access to digital tools, we were very well-developed there. We have a one-to-one iPad initiative. They've all got access to digital tools. Technology for rigorous assessment, we were emerging. Some of our last year at this time, some of our departments had assessment tools as part of a textbook package or that we purchased for them, but not a building-wide or district-wide assessment data warehouse component. Well, we've since addressed that with Illuminink in our district and we're using that. So, we have that component. If we were to do a reevaluation of us, we'd be much higher in there. And then last, bless you, teaching digital citizenship, that's another one where we were starting to teach a digital citizenship, but last year at that time, that curriculum with the leadership of Ms. Scott was being developed by our counselors. We're actually implementing it now. So, once again, our rating would be much higher than that just beginning kind of rating. As far as re-envisioning the learning spaces, using our learning spaces in innovative ways, we were really just beginning to explore that. We're talking about flexible seating, flexible classrooms. And that's really something that we're interested in as a building, but there are a couple of components there, is getting teachers to learn more about what it's like to teach in those settings, what it's like to take all the desks out of your classroom and just have a variety of teaching settings. And there's a capital, an expense piece there too, in taking out the desks that we purchased in our nice high school and replacing them with bouncy balls or something like that. There's a pretty big capital outlay there too. Innovative approaches to learning, that's something we always strive for. We're pretty good in some of our areas with our innovation, but there's still, we're a big high school with a lot to learn. And then lastly, relevant student chosen learning, we do pretty well in that department. Our electives that we are able to offer to kids and our experimental type of classes like robotics are, I think, just as good as anybody anywhere, but we can always still be better in providing some different ways as far as student chosen learning. Professional growth, this is some areas that we really want to get better at and we appreciated his comments and feedback on this area. We're talking about using technology for job embedded professional development. I think we do a good job of professional development for our teachers, but using technology to make that happen or development through technology is something that we're just kind of learning to do. And in particular, taking our professional learning networks, asking teachers to use social media as a professional development tool and then teach students to use digital media and social media in some cases as a learning tool instead of just keeping up with the Kardashians. You know, and we've got some teachers that do a great job at that. Use my daughter for an example. My daughter graduated in 2015 and as part of some of her classes, she was encouraged to follow Dr. Oz, she was interested in medicine, Dr. Oz or other surgeons or other people in the health-related fields on Twitter. And as part of an athletic leadership team, she was encouraged to follow people like Pat Summitt at the time or Muhammad Ali. So, you know, trying to learn Twitter, trying to use Twitter to learn and to grow and to develop and encourage kids to do that instead of, like I said, just keeping up with the Kardashians. Let Coach Tone talk a little bit about his comments here for us as far as branding our school and our district.
So, last year, Mr. Dorby came to me and we kind of discussed with athletics and activities, it's kind of, you know, they call it the front porch of the school, that's the majority of the time that you get parent communication and parent activity in the school. A lot of times, that's through athletics and activities, whether it's coming to the music festival or going to a basketball game. So, he has asked me to kind of take over the branding and marketing piece of Garden City High School. And for us, it was something that we thought we were doing, but we weren't exactly sure how to do it. I'm sure, I'm sure not even all of you have Twitter. Most of you probably have Facebook, but what we were doing is we were just throwing a whole bunch of stuff on the wall. We were posting to Facebook and posting to Twitter and we really have no idea exactly what we were doing. And he came in to evaluate us exactly how we were branding our stuff. And at that point, we had actually started to put something together as far as an actual strategy on how to market Garden City High School, not just Garden City Athletics, but Garden City High School. We did it around four things and I'll just, before I have three in a row, and I'll kind of explain what I do before we go any further. We did it around four things. We wanted to be able to market our school and develop a well-rounded platform that could touch all of you, all of your kids, grandparents, community members, whatever it may be through social media. First, we wanted to make sure that the expectations of the district and school were understood and are implemented in what we do with social media. We wanted to have a unified voice, one brand that everybody understands. When people see the Garden City Buffalo logo, I don't care where you are in the state, if you have that on, people know where it is. And that's what we wanted to continue to do. We wanted to make sure our time on social media, when parents got on social media, it was timely information, it was relevant information, and it was informative information. A lot of times, the stuff that you see on social media are none of those three. And last, we wanted to make sure that we opened up two lines of communication. What we have a big problem with in education is we do a lot of talking and they do a lot of listening, but they don't really do a lot of talking back. Well, parents are the same way. We put a whole bunch of stuff out on social media or we put out newsletters or we put out the Sugar Bead or whatever it is, Channel 21, but nobody talks back to us. That's the big area that we have to improve as a school and I think as a district. So, I did this, I shouldn't say I, we did this in a bunch of different ways. We have social media, we have Twitter, we have Facebook, we have YouTube, we have a blog, we have email, we have the herd app. We do all this stuff and what we ended up doing is all this stuff that, almost all the stuff that we do is all student-driven. We have a social media director, a student is a social media director that's in charge of posting stuff to our social media accounts, as scary as that is. We have a person that is the director of marketing and she posts, Ritten Crawford, posts all our stuff to the blog that eventually goes onto the, onto our different social media accounts. We have people in charge of BBS that post all our stuff to YouTube. So, everything that we do besides our website and email is all student-driven stuff. When he came to look at us, our vision for branding was pretty well laid out. I think if he came back now, we're a lot further along. If you look at what we do compared to most other schools, we're well ahead of most schools in the state of Kansas. One mentor that I use is actually a guy at Rockers High School in Kansas City and him and I communicate on exactly how they do their social media stuff and that's the direction we're trying to go. Recognize digital branding. How many of you guys know what hashtags are? Do you know what they're used for? Like one or two. Like if you use a hashtag, you can go and search that hashtag. Donald Trump has kind of messed it up for all of us because he hashtags everything, but that's the premise behind it. We have hashtag GC Buff Pride. We use that for almost everything at Garden City High School. We use some hashtag one herd with a lot of athletic stuff, but in theory, you can go back and you can search through. What he was looking for is to make sure that we have one unified brand as far as a hashtag. I think it goes well beyond a hashtag because I think a lot of older adults, and I'm not calling you guys old, but may not know what a hashtag is. I don't know if I'll have my job after this. I saw two resignations, I may have to put in a third. So, he kind of dinged us on that because we only have, we have one hashtag GC Buff Pride, but we didn't have it on everything. What we started to do is we actually started to implement GC Buff Pride on everything that we do. This is something that we put out, also student-driven, our Week at a Glance, it's actually become very popular. A lot of other schools have started taking our Week at a Glance and using it and we share it free of charge. We should have patented it.
You should have patented that.
I hope we can make some good money. But we put out not just athletic stuff, we have debate stuff when it's banned, we have banned stuff on there. We have not just athletics, but everything on our Weekend of Glance.
Public relation.
We have a board meeting on that Monday.
Oh, I should, I should have put more.
Maybe not.
Maybe I'll put that on there in the future.
No, Dr. Dair.
You guys will get a few more people maybe. So, not only branding, but we also looked at public relations. And when he was looking at public relations, the first one is sharing student achievements. We're no different than you parents. You know, when you get on Facebook, all you ever see are the great things and we do the same thing. We make sure that we share all the great things happening at Garden City High School. We post, you know, the robotics stuff, we post all these great achievements and we're well-versed in doing that. We exceptional at that. The low part that we had was a public relations strategy. So, I don't think, you know, when we evaluated ourselves and when he evaluated us and asked about a public relations strategy at the high school, we couldn't really give him an answer. And that's what we're in the process of working on now is a strategy. So, when something happens at the high school, whether it's a crisis or something along those lines, how do we get that out to parents? What's the strategy? What's the process in order to get everything out and use the same message for everyone? So, there's no cross signals or mixed signals on anything we do. We're currently working on putting a plan together as high school administrators. The third one is use of social media. We use the heck out of social media. The big problem that we have in using our social media is we do not do a great job and we're good at it, but we don't do a great job of getting parents to communicate back to us through social media. We're working on that. We're trying to get more and more parent communications. We're going to start doing polling, start doing stuff like that to see if we can start dragging some of that parent communication out of them. Right now, I think a lot of parents are uncomfortable to post. I get a lot of communications in inboxes. So, on Facebook, parents will message me on Twitter, parents will message me on us on Twitter, but it's not public information and it's like any other type of setting. A parent wants to know about a game and they'll inbox me. So, it would be better if they would just post it and then everybody else could see the same question and we could actually have that dialogue with parents on how to do that.
Under this heading, I would really like your help on helping us, let the public know, like things that we're discussing, like transportation changes.
Yeah.
That would have been a great opportunity for you to help us, let people know so that we can get feedback in a timely manner and against questions before our vote has to happen.
That's, and Ms. Hopkins, Dr. Hopkins, you bring that up. This is something that everybody is struggling with right now. All these schools are struggling with understanding social. Everybody understands how to talk to the newspaper and they understand how to talk to the radio station, but they don't understand how to talk socially on social networks. And that's something that we as a school are really working on, being able to do stuff like that.
Do you think it's received and then there's just no return? But at least if they receive it, they could, they could call Dr. Carlin or call a member.
I think there's a lot of reception because I can go through and I could do a three-hour presentation, but I can go through on Facebook, Twitter, YouTube, Instagram, any of that stuff, and I can see how many people are clicking on it and viewing it and engaging with that content. And with our herd blog, I can actually go and see that engagement piece to know that people are engaging with the content, but they're not doing anything after that, which is great because they've actually engaged with the content. With something like transportation, then they would probably direct it towards Dr. Carlin. But what we eventually want to get to is like with transportation, if they have a complaint or if they're happy about it, we would love, as scary as it is for a community to do, we'd love for them to comment.
Sure.
And start that dialogue and start that conversation. It's a scary, a scary thing, but that's where you would like it to go is an actual dialogue and conversation.
And there's not a lot of those topics throughout the year, but you're usually two or three a year that the board would really appreciate feedback. And a lot of times, we don't get it until the 11th hour and you need to make a vote and it's just really difficult. If you could help, that would be nice.
Yeah, and that is the benefit of social is it's immediate. They're, you know, they're going to put out the newspaper and it won't come out till tomorrow or, you know, radio or whatever it may be. That's what's, sorry, killing.
In this section two with the public relations strategy, what's a concern for us is we develop our strategy at the high school and we worked this summer on developing a strategy for us. But there are 17 buildings in the district now?
Right.
Eighteen and we all have access, so we could all be developing our strategy going every different way. And so, his recommendation was really, you need a district public relations strategy so that people are posting, sharing and trying to get feedback the same way. Because we're, I mean, right now, we're kind of doing some things and other buildings are kind of taking what we're doing and Coach Tone showed you about the Week at a Glance, but I mean, they're, right now, it's.
We're pretty hot.
Yeah.
I mean, but, and to be fair, everybody is because it's so new. It all needs to come under one roof in one house and be centrally communicated with one voice for the whole group.
It's very new and not every citizen has been trained in cyber citizenship.
Yes. Sorry, next word.
So, there's a natural apprehension to comment, I think.
Yes. Well, and Dr. Hopkins, you know, one of your questions to Mr. Horni was about devices and stuff like that. I personally see that as one of the biggest benefits of the iPads and of those things, our students, really teaching them how to and then teaching parents how to. And you'll see in this, in this one, communication with parents, C2. We don't do a great job of communicating with our parents. And I think one of the biggest reasons why we're not doing a great job of communicating, they're all kind of intermingled, but we have to teach them how to communicate.
It's two-way communication, which is a big thing.
Yes.
We do a great job of pushing information out, but it's, here is, he's talking specifically, two-way communication. And communication at home, even though, well, for instance, at the high school, all of our kids have iPads, yet in a couple of instances, last year, we had some different school emergencies, but we didn't really have any way to use those devices. We put into each of those kids' hands to communicate with them. That would have been a great tool for us to have developed.
But because, because they don't have internet connection at home or we can't get a message out to all students on all iPads, the, our piece of the technology isn't there to say we have some crisis going on and it just immediately go to all kids' iPads or all parents for that matter.
But just to clarify, it's communication using digital tools.
Using digital tools, yes.
I just want to clarify.
Yeah, this is, this has a decidedly digital.
It's not parent-teacher conferences face-to-face.
Right, but when you said we're not great at communication with parents, using digital tools.
Using digital tools, the two-way, two-way digital communication.
Because I don't want people to think we don't have good communication.
No, we communicate.
Right.
We just don't have great two-way communication digitally.
Right.
Yes. Yeah, so here, technology and social media, we do a good job with technology and social media. More and more teachers are using it, all of our programs use it, whether it's Band Booster Club or baseball or you pick it, everybody uses social and digital tools. C2, students and parents using digital tools, that's something that we have to work on and in my opinion, it kind of connects with C3. Staff and community collaboration, excuse me, staff communication and collaboration. What we see with a lot of our staff, on Twitter, they will use a lot of like ed chats, they'll get online and follow ed chats or follow different chats going on online using hashtags and those things. I do it a lot. A lot of times, I'll just sit in and I sit in as you just basically sit there and watch the chat go on. A lot of our teachers do the same thing. What we're seeing right now in education is blogs are kind of being revived. Blogs were early 2000s thing that moms used to get on and talk about their kids. And now what you're seeing is a lot of blogs have been revived and people are really going towards blogs educationally and not professionally as well. Vlogs, video blogs are growing more and more with the use of YouTube. And then what I've seen lately is a lot of people moving to podcasts. Podcasts were kind of the same thing as blogs. They started out real slow, but they've picked up steam, especially in education where you can get constant information, there's constant PD going on. What we need to do is we need to find a way for our staff to continue to get professional development, but I think we need to push that over onto our parents. And some of our teachers already are. I know Mr. Raymer, he videos a lot of stuff and he'll show parents how to help their kids with math homework. We have science teachers doing the same thing where they actually record videos, put it on social media and then parents can help their kids do homework or they can explain stuff through homework.
Yeah, and to address this last one about staff communication and collaboration, we tried, Coach Tone's talked about the hashtag quite a bit. At the high school, we started to hashtag I teach GC as a way for staff to communicate good things that are going on in their classes and different types of innovative instructional techniques with each other. Hey, I'm trying this and it works really great, maybe you should try this and to learn from each other that way instead of the GC Buff Pride, which is kind of our brag hashtag.
brag hashtag. The last area, oh, by, by the way, one of the ways that we're communicating or trying to communicate is with our website, housing our Twitter, our latest, under recent news, all the different, the latest blogs that we're sending out from the Hurd blog. Once again, a lot of this stuff is student-produced and that's, that's something we're pretty proud of too. Yes.
Can you track how many people visit?
Yes, yeah, and we haven't received any tracking data from this last year. The most popular thing probably from the, the last set of tracking data was the high school calendar and, and activity site, by far, I think, was the most popular, most clicked-on thing. But yeah, we can track that data and we've, we've looked at it, but not since the spring. The last of the seven areas was opportunity. Do we give students, teachers, the opportunity to really innovate and to do some experimental kind of things and collaborate? The first of these indicators that we, that we were rated a three out of four is do we use our technology and our digital tools to collaborate with folks outside of our school? To get, to video in folks, to communicate and share what we're doing with groups outside of Garden City High School. And he liked where we were going there. As far as our community, we do a great job partnering with the folks in our community. The other indicator here where we weren't quite as rated as high is what do we do with that to share what we're doing and collaborate outside of Garden City? Develop a partnership with an entity in Kansas City or an entity wherever digitally. We don't have a lot of those partnerships. We have some. We have a performing arts partnership with folks at Juilliard that have come to Garden City High School. That's a continuing year-after-year partnership. We've got a partnership with KU with the Night at the Lab. That's a recurring kind of out-of-Garden-City partnership that we can enhance using digital tools. So, and I agree, we're much better with our in-town support in our, in our partnerships with local entities than we probably are with using our digital tools to break out of Garden City and, and develop some, some kind of connections with entities outside of town. Overall, these were our average ratings in each of those areas. We're either, well, we're in the developed area or right here on the border of emerging and developed, a, a three out of four in most of the areas overall. And I think we would actually be, if he came back for another visit, we'd actually move up in several of the areas with some of the things that we tried to do with his recommendation.
How does that compare to what our staff felt we would score?
He actually rated us a little higher than we thought we would. We were, we were kind of hard on ourselves, but once again, from the inside, you don't know.
Right.
And sometimes you get, sometimes you take things, some, I guess it's bad to say, but for granted, yeah, we're doing this and that's great, but someone else from the out, in, from the outside coming in and say, wow, you're doing this, this is awesome. Well, for us, it's what we do. And so it was a little higher than what we gave ourselves credit for. So what we're, what he did also was then leave some more targeted feedback in each of the seven areas that we're trying to then take and, and put on to our future practices. The big focus for student learning and engagement was rigor and an assessment piece. Well, rigor has always been something we've been trying to get our hands around and improve at Garden City High School and the assessment piece is going to grow with the Illumin8. Learning spaces, once again, we talked about, well, maybe it's flipped classrooms, maybe it's different seating opportunities. There's a lot we have to learn before we make a lot of growth there yet. We're just, we haven't had a lot of exposure to some of those things and how they really work. We've got a lot to learn, I think, here, but we can grow, I think, quite a bit when we do.
We've got our, in each academy, they have the.
The resource area, the larger, yeah.
Right, for collaboration, things like that.
Yes. And we use it, we use it quite a bit. And that's, he did give us credit in our evaluation for that, we give ourselves credit for that.
Okay.
But we're talking about, you know, taking the desks out of rooms and having different seating arrangements and, and.
Throw out of the box, though.
Yes, yeah. As far as professional growth, we talked about, he, he recommended that we devote more of our TLC time to technology trainings, which is kind of difficult sometimes, you have to find that expert that can come and do those things. Sometimes it's in-house, but sometimes, if you really want to grow, sometimes it's not in-house and then finding those folks and bringing them in has been a challenge for Coach Tone with the communication, public relations and branding?
Yeah, so as you can see with communication, he kind of, he's kind of touched on some of the things that we, we know and we've talked about. You know, Mr. Norby said it, I think we're a little harsher on ourselves than what other people may be. And that's one of the big things that I'm really working towards with our communication stuff and we've worked on as a, as a school, is that two-way communication. Public relations, he believes this is an area of strength, even though he marked us down as having no strategy, our no strategy, he felt was actually better, you know, more put together than, than what a lot of people actually have with the hashtags and, and those things. And then his big thing is the promotion of hashtags, whether it be on the school website, Facebook, Twitter, Instagram, anything that we have, and we've started to do that with all of our stuff, is put the hashtag GC Buff Pride on there as kind of a way to brand Garden City when they see on social, Garden City High School, they'll see the hashtag and, and think of Garden City High School. So we've started to do all that stuff that he's suggested we do.
Yeah, and as far as opportunity, that one is a, is an interesting challenge, I, I look forward to taking that on more, is fostering those partnerships, as I said, with entities outside of Garden City, using digital tools to do that, to, to bring folks in from outside using, using distance and taking better advantage of our tools that way. And that, that's it. So a wrap-up of our digital practices assessment. I can't wait, there's another piece to this and that's him coming back and communicating with us again about, okay, we've had the visit, given you some feedback, and now where have we taken it? And so I can't wait to come back and we've done a lot of things with, that he suggested and we've, we're ready to make some more growth and look forward to having that piece.